Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops who are fighting overseas, for our freedom, and for those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. I'd ask you to stand for just one more moment. The Village of Suffolk today received some very, very sad news. Today, our canine hero has answered his last call for the Suffolk Police Department. It's with great sadness that I tell you this. Hero was a great service to this village and a best friend to Lou Ventorini and Ann. Lou is just one of our most amazing police officers with our canine dogs. In Hero's retirement, he sided with Lou and Ann Ventorini, and we thank them both for giving Hero such a wonderful retirement. So, to you Lou and Ann, thank you, and to Hero, a moment of silence for all of your wonderful service to this village. Thank you. We will begin by setting our July meetings due to the July 4th holiday. We have chosen to have the workshop and board meeting all in the same evening on July 14th. The board meeting will start at 7:00 PM. At this time, we have some awards to give out and some recognition. I would like to invite Chief Clark Osborne up to the podium.
Good luck, Mayor. Thank you, Board, and thank you to our audience for your continued support of the Suffolk Police Department, all that we stand for. I have several officers from my department here tonight to honor three officers who have recently retired. Unfortunately, one could not be here tonight, the other two are. As well as, we're going to give two awards of recognition for outstanding service to our department. I would like to first start off by calling up Officer Tim Dunn of the Suffolk Police On February 10th, 2014, the Suffolk Police Department received a frantic 911 call from a Parkside Drive mother who stated that her infant child had stopped breathing. Police Officer Tim Dunn, who answered the 911 call, was able to keep the mother calm and proceeded to explain over the phone to what she needed to do in an attempt to have her child start breathing again. Shortly after giving these directions, the infant was heard crying in the background, and thanks to Officer Dunn's instruction, this infant's child's life was saved. Officer Dunn, we'd like to congratulate you on behalf of the Suffolk Police Department, and thank every one of us here for saving the life of that child. Congratulations. We have a plaque from the Suffolk Police Department, "The Performance of Duty" to Officer Timothy Dunn. Congratulations, a job well done, Tim. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call up dispatcher Jeremy Cowfer. Thank you, Jeremy. On April 28th, 2014, the Suffolk Police Department responded to an unattended death on Washington Avenue here in the Village of Suffolk, where it was determined by investigators that the decedent died under suspicious circumstances. After further investigation with the assistance of the Rockland County Medical Examiner's Office, it was found that this party was a victim of an apparent homicide by asphyxiation. Two suspects, a man and a woman, were quickly identified, and the investigation proceeded. That evening, Suffolk Police Dispatcher Jeremy Cowfer, who was working a 4 to 12 tour, observed a news story about two people, a man and a woman, jumping from the George Washington Bridge to their deaths. Knowing about the events that transpired in Suffolk earlier in the day, dispatcher Cowfer notified Officer Ventorini and Detective Qualley, who were working that evening, with the assistance of the Suffolk Police Officers and Detective Bureau, a positive ID was made the following morning as to the victims of the bridge jump, being the same suspects of the Suffolk homicide. Dispatcher Cowfer's quick alertness to the situation brought our case to a quick close. Jeremy, you did a fantastic job, used great instincts to close this case out, and on behalf of the Village of Suffolk and Suffolk Police Department, we congratulate you and thank you for your efforts. Dispatcher Jeremy Cowfer, in recognition of your performance of duty, June 2014. Thank you, Jeremy. Good job. I now like to call up Sergeant John De Roma of the Suffolk Police Department, who recently Sergeant John De Roma has served the Suffolk Police Department since 1986. Promoted to Sergeant in 2004, he headed our accreditation unit. We are one of a small number of departments, I believe 20 percent of the departments in New York State, that is state accredited, which means we have to meet 131 standards of a professional police department. Sergeant De Roma took the lead on that and became our accreditation manager and got us through this process. He also co-chaired our annual holiday tour drive for over 20 years, and he served as a squad sergeant. Sergeant De Roma, you'll be missed. You did a fantastic job in the Village of Suffolk and the Police Department. Testament to all the officers here for you tonight, as well as the others of the job you did. I want to thank you and congratulate you for your service to our department. To Sergeant John De Roma, in recognition of your dedicated service to the Suffolk Police Department, June 2014, we congratulate you, Sergeant De Roma. I'd also like to call up his wife Jackie, if she could, because she's not taking a picture. Sergeant De Roma? After almost 30 years of service, we used to do is give you flowers. Congratulations, Jackie. Thank you. Congratulations to you guys. Detective Sergeant Ray Sheen could not be here tonight with us. Our next award will be going to recently-retired Sergeant Edgardo Alvarez. And Eddie, please join us up here. Sergeant Alvarez served our department since 1997. Prior to that, Eddie served as a state trooper with the New York State Police out of Tarrytown. Promoted to Sergeant in 2004, and he's been a midnight supervisor for the last, how many years? I put four, okay, four and a half, but it's counted, right? Four and a half years. Eddie, you did a great job. It is a pleasure. You always come in in a good mood, pleasurable to deal with, and we want to thank you for your service to the Suffolk Police Department. And Cindy, if you could please come up, his wife Cindy as well, and join us up here as well. Eddie, in recognition of your dedicated service to the Suffolk Police Department. Cindy, congratulations to you, Eddie. Good job. Thank you, guys. And that concludes our awards tonight. I'll be back with some others later, and thank you to the testament... It's a testament to our department, to our officers, we have dispatched a whole department here tonight for these officers, and I want to thank all of the great officers we have here, and I thank you for your continued support of everything that we stand for here in Suffolk. So, congratulations to all of you.
Not here yet? He's not here yet? He's here. He's here. I'm just going to give our police department a minute to leave the room. Okay. I have a few awards to give out. First is an award that is probably a woman who's given many, many more years than just to Suffolk Seniors Club, her dedication and volunteering. Rosemary Scalacci has been the president of the Suffolk Seniors for many, many years. A couple of times, she tried to retire, and they reeled her right back in, and Rosemary being Rosemary always said, sure, I'd be happy to help out. But it's come to the time now where Rosemary has said, it's time for me to sit back and watch others take the lead, but I couldn't let your final, I would say, attempt at retirement without recognizing you, Rosemary, and all that you do for the senior citizens here in the Village of Suffolk, your countless hours of crafts and time spent knowing each and every senior, always remembering every birthday, always remembering special days, and being such a wonderful person in our village. You are indeed an incredible woman, and we are so proud of you and all the accomplishments that you've had with the Village of Suffolk. So, please come up and accept this thank you from the Village of Suffolk. And it's for Rosemary Scalacci, President of the Suffolk Seniors Club, in recognition for your many years of distinguished and devoted service as president, from myself and the village board. And I don't know if you heard what Rosemary just said, but again, this just goes as testament to who she is. She said, no, but the Village of Suffolk has done so much for me. So, that's just to show you who she is. Thank you, Rosemary. Do you want to say something? You sure? Okay. She said for 15 years, she's made many wonderful friends here in the village, so that's great. Thank you again, Rosemary. A couple of weeks back, I received a letter from the Boy Scouts, and I have to tell you that, in my, I guess, lack of knowledge about what it is to be an Eagle Scout, I decided it was time that I learned, because I received a letter that not only did one of our own residents here in the Village of Suffolk, but three other young men were also going to be attending a court of honor to become Eagle Scouts. So, I decided it's time to look up to see what an Eagle Scout was, and I have to tell you, these four young men had to work very hard to obtain, I believe it's 23 badges, am I correct? 23 badges. Dad's giving me the thumbs up. 23 badges, each of which had its own purpose and hard work that went into it. And they also had to attend many different functions and seminars and classes and learn so much about scouting. Scouting is such a wonderful organization to be involved in, and I just couldn't let it go by without letting our village know how proud we are of these four young men. So, I would like to ask Luke Shedler to please come up. Is Mom and Dad here? Luke's Mom and Dad? Come on up. This young man was able to accomplish this, in big part due to his parents' encouragement, and I'm sure in taking him back and forth to many different meetings and different events. Correct, Luke? Yes. Okay, so this is for Luke Shedler. Congratulations on achieving the highest honor of Eagle Scout. This next young man also was at the Court of Honor and received his achieving the highest honor of Eagle Scout. So, I'd like to ask Zachary Kuno to please come up. Zach, you want to tell me who is with you today?
I have my dad and two of my cousins, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it. And this is also my friend, Becky, from my Boy Scout crew, who came to support me. And my mom, unfortunately, also wasn't able to make it, but I love you.
Absolutely. And again, without your parents, you wouldn't have been able to achieve this, so our congratulations goes to all of you. So, this is for a certificate for outstanding contribution presented to Zachary Kuno. Zach just told me he doesn't have 23 badges, he has 68. So, he's been doing some work. You know, in looking into the Eagle Scouts, I noticed that Hank Aaron was an Eagle Scout. I noticed that the chief executive of Walmart was an Eagle Scout. Trying to think who else was on the list. There were some pretty impressive people on...
First man on the moon.
First man on the moon, right. He was also an Eagle Scout. So, set your goals high, boys. Eagle Scouts definitely become very important people and very successful. So, congratulations to you all. I would also like to recognize, although they could not be with us here tonight, Kevin Olson and Blake Welsh, also received their Eagle Scout honors. Okay. If our Eagle Scouts wanted to go and celebrate their achievements, we would not be heard in the least. I mean, you're welcome to stay, but I think you'd rather be celebrating someplace else than at the board meeting. Okay. Is Mike Stark here? No? Is Mike Stark here? Oh, they have a fire call. Okay. So, Fire Department will pass on. 7:40, we have a public hearing for the vacant building law. Terry?
Thank you. The mayor had suggested a month or so ago that we look at some type of regulation dealing with vacant stores. Unfortunately, it happens that we do have vacancies, and we want to make sure that they maintain their appearance and that the services and so forth are maintained, so it's kept in a neat and orderly manner. The Board has had this law for a number of weeks. A couple of changes were made in response to the suggestions of the Board of Trustees, and so, as I mentioned, it regulates how those buildings are maintained, as well as has a registration requirement for buildings that are vacant and, when appropriate, a plan for restoration or demolition.
Okay. Would anybody like to speak? Comments from the Board?
I move that the public hearing be closed.
So moved. Oh, yes, you're a second. Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Let me just say a thing, that I went to a conference called Main Street Conference in Austin, New York. I went to a Main Street Conference in Austin, New York, and the subject of vacant storefronts was brought up there, and they were working on it, and I said, when I got back, I mentioned that to the mayor, and she immediately put Terry to work on that, and I appreciate that getting done. And I'm going to send, I got a copy, I have the business card of an Austin trustee, so I'm going to send a copy of this law to him.
I want royalties, though.
And royalties to Terry Rice, too. And I'm glad to vote yes, or wait.
You making a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, yeah.
Do I have a second?
I'm too busy patting myself on the back.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Verne?
Yes.
Mr. Mian?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Thank you. Our Culture and Recreation, Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor, Village Board. A few things that we have coming up in the month of June, we've got a lot of pool information. The pool will be open every weekend from now until June 28th, from Saturday and Sunday, between 12 and 6:00. We have pool registration throughout the month of June, and on the calendar, there are specific dates. The next one is next Wednesday, June 11th. Swim lessons registration begins on June 24th, and we have the second session on June 26th. It's 5:30 to 7:30 here upstairs in the community room. We have a brand-new opening of an older building. The Suffolk Railroad Museum is coming to life again, and it will be open on Saturdays between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM.
Kathy, you do want to also mention that we're looking for volunteers?
Yes. The village is looking for volunteers. We've mentioned it at a few of the senior meetings. For anyone that would like to volunteer at the Railroad Museum, it would entail greeting visitors and just being there as a help to the village. So, if you're interested, please call Recreation, and we would love to have you. The Railroad Museum is going to coincide with the farmers' markets. They're going to be open, the outdoor one is open at Parking Lot A on Saturdays between 8:30 and 1:00. We also wanted to mention upstairs here in Village Hall, we have the Suffolk Museum. It's open on Sundays at 2:00 PM, and we'd love for people to come out and see it. It's recently been renovated, and it's a beautiful transformation up there. Okay, the next one, we have Clifford Theater auditions. They started earlier, a few weeks ago, and then we had two this week. We had one this evening at 6:30, and then there's going to be another Clifford Auditions tomorrow night at 6:30 here in the auditorium. So, please pass the word. The next event we have is this Saturday, the River Cleanup, that's been canceled twice so far due to weather.
But there's no rain in the forecast for Saturday.
We're hoping for good weather. That will be at 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM down on Lonergan Drive. So, all that are interested, please come out and volunteer. We have green, very bright green t-shirts for those who volunteer, so please come down.
Lots of goodies that are being donated from all of our businesses in the downtown area.
So, we're going to Lonergan Drive, or are we going here?
Lonergan.
It will be Lonergan Drive, yes, the one-spot Lonergan Drive on Saturday.
Okay.
And then also on June 7th, we wanted to mention that the Vincent Crotty Memorial Foundation is having the fifth annual wing and barbecue night that night on Saturday, June 7th, at the Mawa Elks Lodge. Hopefully, people can join us. We also have next Thursday, June 12th, the Recreation Board Meeting. We have upcoming our fishing derby on June 14th. It will be at 9:30 to 11:00 at Foxwood Pond. There's a barbecue to follow at the Mawa Elks. Registration begins at 8:30 AM, and this event is free to everybody. So, spread the word, bring the kids out. If they've never fished before, it's a great event to bring the family. We also have an employee pool party. We're going to have that on June 17th at the pool. We have upcoming the Dare Pool Party, which Chief Osborne will be reaching out to everybody about that. It's on June 18th, between 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM at the Suffolk Memorial Pool. We have our first summer concert beginning, the first one is on June 25th, and the band is No Exit. So, that will be at the gazebo on June 25th at 7:00 PM. And then the pool will be open for the summer on Saturday, June 28th, seven days a week until Labor Day. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay. Our grant writer is unable to be with us this evening. He did want me to mention a few items, the first being that the Village of Suffolk was awarded another $100,000 for the downtown business facade program. It was extremely exciting for us that the application was for $100,000, and we received $100,000. That generally does not happen. I would like to thank our county executive, Ed Day, for pushing for this for us and getting us the whole amount. To date, we have received over $457,000 towards our facade program. So, it's a wonderful thing, and Corinne and Joe have been working very hard in getting our downtown building owners involved in this facade program, and it's really working out quite nicely. New York State Assemblywoman Ellen Jaffe was instrumental in requiring us a $2,000 grant for Clifford Theater. The Village of Suffolk has teamed up with the Village of Nyack and with the Solid Waste Management Authority to submit a grant application for promoting recycling throughout the community. It was through Coca-Cola and Keep America Beautiful, and the Village of Suffolk was an award winner, and they will be donating free recycling bins for the village. So, that was very nice. I want to thank Charles Sawicki, Scott Brown, for working on that project. We have our hazard mitigation grant application. We have applied for six different grants. We are looking forward to hearing from those grants at the end of May, I'm sorry, the end of June, beginning of July. And I'd like to also thank Senator Carlucci and Senator Gillibrand for their letters of support for our projects and for these grants for the Village of Suffolk. Chief Clark Osborne is submitting to the U.S. Department of Justice for a grant to offset the cost of three new police hires. It's the Community Orientated Policing Services 2014 Hiring Program, and the grant covers 75 percent of the salary and fringe cost of a new officer for a three-year period. So, we do have that application in for that as well. And that is from our grant writer. Next is our village attorney.
Thank you. Chief Stark had come to us a month or two ago with respect to marketing the rescue truck, which at this point will become surplus, and the particular concern here, Red Truck Sales International markets the truck. We don't pay any type of commission, it comes from the potential purchaser, and so what we would like to do is have authorization to sign an agreement that would give them a 120-day exclusive right to try and market the truck. They estimate the value to be approximately $45,000. We've discussed this, and we will make a few changes and provide to them our own letter, and as is the intent and as is implied in this letter, but will be explicit in our letter, that the determination to sell the truck, as well as the ultimate price at which it is sold, remains that of the Board of Trustees.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Joe.
Okay. Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Verne?
Yes.
Mr. Mian?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Okay. I'm going to skip the police department until Chief Osborne comes back in. We will go on to the Department of Public Works, Charles Sawicki. Charles? Charles will be right with us.
He can't walk down this way, he's gotta go the way he normally goes.
It doesn't feel right.
I know. He's got his thing. It's good luck going that way.
All right. Good evening Mayor and the Board. I am requesting authorization for Mr. Stanley Dubrinsky Jr. to attend the Grade A Competent Lab Course offered by Hudson Valley Waterworks Conference. This class will be held on October 9th, 2014 and is located in Middletown, New York, at a cost of $75.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I am requesting authorization for Mr. Nick Fabregatory and Mr. William Barrish to attend the CSEA Peer Trainer Class for Confined Space on June 23rd through June 27th, 2014. This course is located in Bethpage, Long Island, with no cost to the village.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I am requesting payment authorization for application of payment number two to Belvista Construction Company for the roadway improvement phase number six project in the amount of
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this time we will have audience participation. If you would like to speak, please come up to the microphone. Oh, Clark's back, never mind, excuse me, I'm so sorry. I didn't see you sneak back in. Come on up, Clark.
Thank you so much Mayor, but I'll be very quick with this. One of the things I spoke to the board about is we have a certain overwhelming amount of technology downstairs between LiveScan, automatic fingerprints, license plate readers, track scanners, our job has become very technological. Ray Sheehan, who just recently retired, basically did everything for us, to be honest with you, on his own, as a courtesy, didn't have to, but he did. I'm asking the board to hire Ray as a part-time consultant, more than 16 hours a week at $25 an hour, to fill that void so we do not have to hire an IT person at a much, much higher cost, which I think we all know that, the cost can come in much more significant. The money will be taken from a part-time officer salary, a dispatcher salary that we never used, so I'm asking the board to authorize for Ray.
Thank you Chief, and I want, there was some discussion at the workshop with regards to if there was any other alternatives we could have used such as training another police officer that we already have on staff, any avenues that we could take that we didn't have to hire Ray back. I spoke to Ray Sheehan and I must tell you that it is a very specialized talent that he has with the LiveScan and I also spoke to some of the police officers, nobody's interested in taking on an extra task. And it would take quite some time to train an individual to take that over and it would also entitle additional pay as well. So, and an IT person would cost way more than what we will be paying Detective Sheehan. So for him, it is a labor of love and he does go above and beyond and he's always up in the village offices, helping the girls out with their computers, anyone who calls upon him, he's always there to help. Since he's retired, he's been here every single day, so he's a creature of habit, we can't get rid of him, so we thought the best thing to do was to hire him back and keep him doing what he does so very, very well. So moved.
Mayor, can I say something?
Sorry, sure.
Can he have a backup just in case he gets sick or he can't be here? Someone he can train?
Yeah, honestly, yeah, Frank, you see, you know, we actually have a plan in place where he's gonna start teaching certain parts of it, yeah. And I want to thank you Frank, we spoke the other night about it, the workshop, and we agree with you, we need somebody for that. And I think Ray can do the very technical stuff, but a lot of the stuff he can teach, some of us to do that kind of works, yes, we're gonna plan on that.
Thank you.
Matt?
Yeah, just, I know Detective Sheehan to be a very dedicated member of the department, known him for many, many years and probably is no better fit for this particular position. I just hope we're working on a Plan B if he decides at some point retirement's really for him.
We got it, yes we are, yes.
And he doesn't want to come back one day, that we have some alternative in place, that's the only concern.
And honestly, Matt, we totally agree with you, we actually have a couple of officers, I think we're gonna train for some things, and some of the new officers coming in are probably be a pretty good fit, it sounds like what we understand, so. But thank, no, I appreciate it, thank you.
And I should also add that one of the stipulations of this, I had to tell him that if we did do this, he would have to continue to do the car seats, for children's car seats in the cars, because he always has done them in the past and does such a great job, so he agreed he will continue to do the child car seats installations, so that's part of the deal.
That's the deal.
We want it in writing.
He's in, he's in.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you Mayor and Board, I greatly appreciate it. I'd now like to ask the board to accept the resignation of part-time police officer Frank Armstrong effective July 13th. Frank's worked with us for the past six years, he's a retired officer from the Spring Valley Police Department, he's going to take an inside job at the Sheriff's Department, so the only reason he's leaving is he feels he's done almost 30 years on the road and he wants to go inside a little bit more. So we're gonna ask the board to accept his resignation effective July 13th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I ask the board to appoint part-time police officer Lila Paul, pending clearance in Rockland County Department of Personnel. Lila retired from the Spring Valley Police Department, she was a youth officer, a school resource officer, as well as a very good patrol officer. She is currently working for the Cornwall Police Department, part-time. It would be a very good addition for our department to be able to have her.
Do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Thank you Mayor and Board, and last but not least, we had spoken at the workshop about, and for, I should say it's the last few years, about a stop sign up in the Bonner area, in the area of Milford Lane, traveling south on Bonner Circle. After lengthy discussions, a lot of research, Joe Hunt and I, and with Charles, we brought in Frederick Clark Associates to do a traffic study and get some ideas on how we can make it safe coming up the hill. We do believe it would be safe, according to Frederick Clark Associates, a letter they sent us, to put that stop sign there with a couple stipulations of a warning sign before it and some other signings we're still going to put together for us. So I asked for, and I actually spoke to several residents, many families, Bonner West, Somerset and Milford, I spoke to several of them the last week, all in favor of it, so I think it's a great thing, we ask for the public hearing next month for that.
Okay, thank you. Does someone want to make a motion to set the public hearing?
For July 14th.
For July 14th?
For July 14th, at what time?
7:40.
7:40, so moved.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Also, just noteworthy, we also had approved speed bumps on Memorial, Oakdale Manor and also...
Humps.
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 I know, but they said not to say it, so I'm not saying it anymore. Speed hills.
Speed control device.
Speed hills.
Wednesdays.
Speed hills, yes. On Memorial, on Oakdale Manor and on Ramapo, Officer Clark also went out and with the engineers to make sure that they are placed in appropriate areas. We, they suggested that we do, Clark, what is that called?
There, it's Joe and I were talking about today, it's a traffic study, and Charles gets a copy, I don't know if you received a copy today, I just got one, traffic study just to make sure of the location of them and also there's some other tests they want to run on each street.
Right.
Basically to make sure that we'll put them in the right spot. And I'll give you the proposal, I literally just received it today, I'll get you a copy of it for the board members so you can take a look at it.
Thank you. So I just wanted to let you know that they are coming, we're just making sure that they are placed appropriately.
Thank you Mayor, and one last thing, this Saturday night, our PBA sponsoring along with the Vincent Crati Foundation, our barbecue wing night at the Mawa Elks, we anticipate a very big crowd, love to have you there, we've had a great turnout, we have a New York City radio station coming up to show 92.3, so it's turned out a great night, I know Mr. Crati's here and we're, hopefully we'll get a great turnout, I want to thank you for your support with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will have audience participation. If you'd like to come up, please state your name and your address.
My last name is Zeller, it's 29 West Malpe Avenue. Coming to unite in behalf of Department of Public Works. We are failing to get bulk and bag pickup on a weekly basis and it starts from your main office here. We haven't had bulk picked up the last Wednesday for two weeks prior. It stunk. Men in our DPW and equipment in our DPW are not being used properly. I met with Joe, I think he's a great guy. I don't think he's using his equipment properly. His men, to his understanding, lifting bags have backs, there's no need for them to lift bags. We got a fork, we're paying for that. We got a dumpster truck, they're not using it. It was nice enough the mayor to take the time after a phone call to go out to the west side. So, Madam Mayor, I'd like you to tell your board what you seen and tell your supervisor that's up in this office that we don't have to make a phone call from the west side to get picked up. So if you'd explain to your board and this public what you seen on that west side last Tuesday morning, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, Mr. Zeller. Yeah, Mr. Zeller gave me a phone call and there were several leaf bags left there over the Memorial Day weekend. We unfortunately, we had explained to Mr. Zeller that we were down on manpower due to several of our DPW workers out on medical in addition to vacation time. So unfortunately, we can't anticipate when there are medical problems, but we did remedy the situation immediately and we also have gotten some part-time summer help in to fill in those who are out on their medicals, which is something we have done in the past, so I think we're back on track. And I know Mr. Hunt is doing, making sure that this doesn't happen again and has gone over his, the entire village to assure that it's not gonna happen. And I believe, you know, I've stopped down there periodically, the three gentlemen that were hired, one is a permanent employee, which we had a resignation of one of our employees, we've now replaced him, he started this Monday, he's working out very well, and then we have two young men who will be part of our summer help. So I think we're fully staffed now, Mr. Zeller, and I can say with certainty that this will not happen again.
I appreciate your time in the matter, but it's gotta be looked into this board, there's no need for them to lift bags.
Okay.
They're wasting time. Alls they gotta do is pull a bag out to the middle of a street and use a claw, it's not time management, doesn't take a superstar. They're not using their equipment. You gotta look into this as a board, 'cause management that starts up in this top office is failing, it's failing bad. There's no communication from the top of this office to the guy that's down at the barn. It fails big time. We need it straightened, because if bags remain out in two weeks, I will make another call and it will be not Tuesday, it will be first thing Wednesday morning. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Jim Genetino, 2 Memorial. We're on the subject, when did we start the policy of not picking up newspapers when there's a holiday in the week?
Go ahead. You want, yeah?
Over three years ago, they had initiated a four-week, we don't have time to come and go.
I'm sorry Joe, I can't...
You want to come up Joe?
Why don't you come on up? Just don't put him in.
Goes back four years to Dan Haglin initiating that because it can't be done with the double runs on the garbage, Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, Friday, to be in compliance if we do the papers, we won't get one of the days of garbage picked up. What would you rather have, garbage or paper?
I'd rather have both like we had for 40 years, with less people than you have now. So I don't understand why it became a problem. Evidently, there's a problem scheduling, there's probably a problem which used to happen every month of May, that everybody had excess vacation and they zonked the DPW, which should not be allowed.
Okay, but in all fairness, we had a horrible winter and if we would have allowed our men to take vacation during the winter months, our snow would not have been plowed. We had men working 24 hours.
Oh, I understand that.
So, I mean, at some point you have to say, you know, you're working, it's winter or summer, unfortunately, winter won over summer this year.
Unfortunately, I've come to these meetings for years. There has been very few meetings in the last four years where the director of Public Works hasn't come in and asked for more money and more help. Check your minutes, it's always, I don't have people. Now that could be true and maybe it's time he learned to work with what he's got like the rest of the world does. Unfortunately, we were in a big hurry to extend the DPW contract to 2018 where we didn't get anything back as far as productivity, so maybe that was a big mistake. But I don't understand how for years and years we survived, we had bad winters, we had winters when we had nothing. So it all comes down to, just like that gentleman said, management. Is the management doing what it's supposed to do and is the scheduling being done correctly? Because, I mean, just a few months back, we put a guy in there to do scheduling, so now we have a guy that should be driving a truck, sitting in the office doing scheduling and now we hear we need more people.
Okay, Jim, first of all, he's not sitting in the office just doing scheduling. Part of his job is scheduling, however, he still rides the garbage truck, he still rides, he still drives trucks, he's not sitting behind a desk all day, that's not...
Well, I did see him at the, at the street fair on overtime, that I did.
Right, okay, so making a statement like that's unfair.
It's true, it doesn't have to be fair, it's true.
It's not true, because he does go out on the trucks and he does go out on the garbage truck and he does do, do other duties besides sitting behind a desk doing scheduling, so that's an unfair statement.
Okay.
Number two, we did not hire additional help. We hired people to replace the men that we have on medical leave so that we have enough manpower to cover all of the garbage trucks, all of the pickups and everything that we've had in the past. So there's no additional employees that we hired.
Until those employees come back from medical leave, then you have additional employees...
No, I don't, they're temporary, Jim.
Did you hire from AmeriCorps for the summer?
We hired temporary, temporary help.
Yes, you could have hired from AmeriCorps who pays half of this salary.
Okay, the unfortunate part of that was we could not wait for that program to start, we needed them now.
I don't know. Private industry finds a way, that's all, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Michael Curly, 84 Orange Avenue. I don't know if everybody knows, there was a lot of rain today, did you notice that? So we have plenty of water, so we should consider selling the water, okay? Number one. Number two, it's always good to have constructive when there are complaints and it's good that a board addresses them. But I happen to feel personally that we have a great Department of Public Works in the Village of Suffolk. I think it's been strong for years. During any busy season, things cannot go perfect, but I believe that they are, if you have a complaint, you want something done, they'll answer to it, all right? And I think it's great that the mayor answered to this gentleman's complaint, all right? But I think they're hard-working guys, I see them on that truck in the summer and the winter, they're out there, they're out there at 5:00 in the morning, we're still sleeping, doing hard work, okay? They're not becoming millionaires, they're working hard for what they got, okay? And that's how I see them, I've always seen them that way, all right? And I still see them that way. Is there some faults in everything? Sure, it's faults in me, believe it or not, all right? But more importantly, just my last issue, I'll go with this, you mentioned something about having an event with a street fair with this... you mentioned something about having an event with a street fair, with this alcohol-related event, okay? Before that really comes up for a vote, I really haven't heard much about it and I heard a quick thing in the workshop, okay? And just to, just to, when you have street fairs, okay? And, and it's a good thing to do events for a village, okay? But I don't think we've ever entertained where we put a separate area just for drinking, okay? And, and there's, there's a certain thing called dram shop. It's where you can, where you can get sued. And of course, the Chamber of Commerce would take insurance for that. But so would the village have to take insurance because they would sue you as well for improving it, all right? So even though you attempt to be covered. But I just think it's important, you have all these establishments in the village that, that, and I'm not saying the answer is no, but I really haven't heard anything vocal where someone's presenting it to us, to have this, this wine or, 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 you know, a beer garden, all right? But there are many licensed establishments in the village who carry dram shop, who, who, who pay the, who have, unfortunately, whether they pay them whenever they have to pay taxes, they have to pay dram shop insurance, they have to pay their liquor license, all right? So every time you let someone come in for just one day, okay? It's one more day you're, you're taking away from them, okay? So it's just, it's just something that, I'm, I'm not saying that, I just think it should be talked about more, not just something that we just vote on without the public. And even the licensed establishments having a right to, to address it, all right? On whether they're even getting to participate or not, all right? So I just think more conversation should be done on it. I'm not saying yes or no, but I haven't heard any, I just heard at the workshop real quick. And I think it's something that just, you just don't, just don't throw out there. People have a right to know about it, okay? God bless, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we'll move along. Yes, oh, I'm sorry, Bruce. Didn't see you back there. The man behind the camera. Is our camera working tonight?
Somewhat. We'll get it done. It'll be better than last month.
Thank you.
I, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Recycling Committee. Hi Frank, how are ya?
Hi, Chris.
Uh, just to announce that during the month of June, the members of the Recycling Committee are going to be going around the village, looking at people's gardens, the front lawns, looking at how they beautify the, the fronts of their houses. Every year, we do an award for best gardening, best, best lawn maintenance, best whatever you want to call it. So we will be back at the July meeting. Now it's July 14th, that's fine. We will be awarding somebody a certificate that night and the village restaurants, of which Michael Curly is a proud owner of one and we are all proud patrons of him. The village residents have been very good about donating gift certificates. So the winner that night will get a gift certificate to one of our fine village restaurants. That's it on that. Just one other thing, as we're talking about pickup and everything, just a simple one. Since we have the notification system, the texting, it might not be a bad idea on the Friday before a holiday weekend to send out, just remember, no paper pickup next week.
Thank you, Bruce.
Just a simple one there. Thank you all.
Excellent. Please recycle.
I don't have any dandelions.
The Village of Suffolk is one of the lowest recycling villages in Rockland County right now. We are not recycling people, we have to recycle.
Seriously?
Seriously. We are, yeah, we, we used to be the highest.
Yeah, we were.
No, we were. We're not anymore. People are getting lazy. We have to get recycling, everybody, please. If you need any recycling bins, contact the DPW. And we also will be getting our Coca-Cola bins, so please recycle. Okay, Village Clerk.
Mayor, we, we have a request for a block party for July the 12th from Mrs. Karen Rodriguez. And this is gonna be up on Center Street.
So moved. All in favor? Opposed? So moved. Okay, Terry's not here to talk about the next one.
Mayor, we have one more request. We have a request from the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, you know what, Virginia, let's hold on to that. Terry stepped out for a moment and I'd like him to be here for that.
All right.
Let's move to the Finance Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Okay. First thing I have is authorization to attend a GFOA seminar in Tarrytown on Friday, June 6th. Cost is $95 and it's to get some training in the borrowings that we're doing, finances. So there'll be bond counsel there and capital markets, our finance people will be there. I'm all in favor of training for borrowing. I love fiscal rightness. I'll move it.
Uh, Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Okay. Okay, and at the workshop, I had indicated that we were looking at changing payroll company from Paychecks to ADP. And I said I was gonna give ADP another call because they never responded. Well, lo and behold, they did call. And they asked me if I could give them a couple of days so they could put together a proposal. So I want to push this off until our next meeting.
Okay, Tom, can you also, Joe had some input of problems with ADP that she would like you to discuss with other treasurers around, around, you know, that are using ADP. I guess there's been some problems with it. So if you could also look into that as well before we get decisions on this, that would be great.
I need to know what operating platform they're on.
Right, I'll, I'll have that for you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last thing was for the insurance. But I understand that the board would like to push that back.
Uh, yeah, we, I received quotes for our insurance. And in going through the quotes, I noticed that there was quite a few discrepancies in the information that the treasurer provided to the different brokers who took interest in, in looking into premiums for us. That being said, I'm not comfortable with going forward with this. I have asked the treasurer to make sure he goes back, checks those numbers again, and make sure that all three brokers that were interested in soliciting premiums for us get all the same and correct information before this board can go forward with making any, with making any decisions on which insurance we will be going with. Now, the insurance lap is going to come to its end on the 12th of June. So it is going to require that the board will have to have a special meeting as soon as we have all our information before the 12th of June to make a decision. So we will hold that off for a special meeting. Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Trustees, do you have anything? No?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just one thing. I, I mentioned this at a prior meeting many months ago. And I sent an email to Tom the other day on the issue of the tax payment. I would like to explore the feasibility of allowing our taxpayers to pay their taxes into installments, which many villages have. There are an awful lot of people here who pay taxes on their own and not through their bank. We have to determine if it is feasible, given the county's re-levy and, and the timing of all the billing. But I have asked by email to Tom that we look into it together. And I just want to reiterate it tonight. I mentioned it at a prior board meeting as well. And I just look forward to hopefully sitting down with Tom, maybe seeing whether, whether that is feasible to give people the option. Bill of Tax bill is not a small bill. And if you allow people the opportunity to, like other villages do, to pay it in installments at their option, I think that would be a relief for many.
Okay, thanks, Matt. We look forward to the findings of that. Thank you.
And I have one other, which if you, if I could ask just to be recognized prior to adjournment, I think the second thing I have is more appropriate then, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's, Terry, we're gonna go back. We did not discuss the Chamber of Commerce without you to have the theme wine and food, September 14th at the street fair. Ori, I'd like to invite you up to just give us a brief overview of what the chamber is thinking in terms of the, the wine and food themed street fair.
Ori Lacata, 96 Lafayette Avenue, Suffolk. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we thank you for your support in our street fairs and we also support the DPW, thinking they work very hard, especially this winter. I was out there every morning early, I saw them come around and they've done a terrific job. We, with the help of Chuck Carone, have implemented a theme of classic cars for the first street fair. This second street fair, we put in a theme, appreciation of the artists of the Hudson Valley. It's gonna take some time for that culture to change. Just if anybody's thinking, why are we still have socks and underwear for sale only? It's very difficult to get vendors. It'll take a couple of years to revamp the whole thing. We don't think it's fair to all the businesses with the chamber is doing to just halt the street fairs and try to go out and get new vendors. It is income-producing. It does bring people in the village. So in an effort to try to change slowly and keep the income and the people coming, we decided to put these themes in. So we decided to try and do wine tasting and food on the third street fair, September 14th. We're not reinventing the wheel. Insurance is all taken care of. Anybody that comes, if you look into all the newspapers, you see almost New City, all Jersey towns having wine tasting. These are professional wineries that have insurance. We will find out if we have to have a master license for a day. We indemnify the Village of Suffolk for everything that we do on our policy. We will be asking for indemnification for the chamber as well as the village, for anybody coming in. But these are professional organizations that we are gonna try to recruit. Torn Valley is one of them. We're going to try to ask to come. Maybe have four or five wineries that come in. I don't believe we're taking in the afternoon drinks away from our village restaurants. I don't really think that's the case. We're enhancing them. And we could also use the help. If anybody, you know, you're probably tired of seeing me represent the chamber, but Rich, myself, we've been here for years and just can't get people to help. So that's another issue. So if anybody has any good ideas and they'd like to participate, we'd love to have you. But if you're looking for a big scenario or something that we're planning, we really don't have it. We started talking informally with Chief Osborne. I started talking with Trish, telling her that we would do whatever it takes to run a professional street fair with regards to this new venue. If we do ask, we're just not gonna go out and get somebody that's gonna open up a bottle of ripple wine and start serving it. It's gonna be a professional organization that's a winery that has done this before and understands exactly what all the ramifications are. Dram shop and safety and health and everything else that goes along with it. And that's basically what we're going to do. We do not have anything definitive because we do not want to call anyone as of yet until we felt that we had the approval and support of the village board. We did start talking the last street fair a little bit about what this new theme was. The Classic Car Show was terrific, the artists were terrific. And I think as years go on and we mature in this, you're gonna see a little bit of a culture change. So what we're trying to do is get maybe four or five or six wineries to complement the street fair, September 14th. And possibly have one or two or three restaurants. We always ask our own restaurants to come out and put up a tent and maybe have some kind of pulled pork or have some ribs or something that go along with wine tasting. And also have a couple of more bands. So as far as the legalities and everything else, that's all gonna have to be run through the people that we're dealing with, so.
Okay, thank you, Ori.
Okay.
Terry, you have comment?
Yeah, well, I mean, as with any type of event, you know, whether it's something with wine or any type of event where people use the village facilities, we want to have liability insurance, naming the village as an additional named insured. This does have dram shop implications. For anyone who doesn't know what dram shop is, it basically means that if, it's a strict liability statute, so that if a bartender, for example, serves someone too much when they should have known that they were already past the limit, you're liable. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. That's the end of, the end of the story. So, you know, we certainly would need insurance for everybody involved along those lines. And again, naming the village as additional named insured because we certainly don't want to have any potential liability on something like this. I, I think, you know, while the board may or may not feel comfortable saying tonight, "Go forward," at least with further exploration, I don't think you have enough details to really say, "Yes, it's a good idea," or "No, it's not a good idea." Because it's, as Ori says, it's still just kind of conceptual at this point. You know, the other things you'd have to explore was what additional costs the village may have as far as police or DPW over time. And I think those are, those are all issues.
Well, that's, that's, the security is gonna be absorbed by the Chamber of Commerce, the extra security. I don't envision any, any difference in the DPW because it's gonna be the same amount of vendors. We have approximately 90 vendors on the street. And as far as having the classic cars and everything else, there's not gonna be that much of a difference. We will provide the security for the wristbands and so forth. And just let me remind you, it's a wine tasting. We're not sitting there pouring numerous drinks for people. They're gonna be passing through, they're gonna be eating. And it's not something that we're inventing the wheel for. It's something that's happened in other towns, it's been very successful. We're gonna be using the same vendors as they are. So I just think it's something that, even though we don't have all the details for, it's not something that we're inventing, we're gonna, gonna kind of reinvent the wheel. It's already going on in different towns. We're kind of missing out on the action. And this is what we'd like to try to do, is to bring more people into our village.
Okay, Ori, can I just ask you, since, since this is obviously new to our village and this would be the first time we would be able to have an event like this, could you possibly put all of this in writing to the board so we can, each of us can look at it, adjust it? If there's any questions, you know, as Terry can, you know, legality-wise, we don't, we dot our i's and cross our t's before we make a decision.
Absolutely.
Would, would that be acceptable to you?
Yes, I think we want to do that.
I don't think we want to say no, but I don't think we're prepared to say yes.
But we're not asking you to say yes tonight. What we're doing, we're just bringing you a new thought and we're just seeing what kind of response you think you may want. And we'll have maybe four or five of these wineries and they'll give us their list of what they're doing. We'll find out.
Yeah, if we can have a little bit more information on the wineries, you know, I think that would be helpful in, you know, making us feel more secure about our decision and then we work out the security issue with the chief and all of, you know, those things I think would be very helpful. Okay, great, thank you. Is that acceptable to the board?
To me, it is.
Yes?
How close are we to the Suffolk Day?
September.
I mean, this is the 14th. When is Suffolk Day?
Suffolk Day is September 14th.
The same day?
Or September 20th, 27th, sorry.
So it's a two-week difference?
Two months. No, 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 months.
No, the street fair is Suffolk Day.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
And you'll involve local restaurants if you do get it off the ground, I hope.
Thank you, Ori. Okay, the next thing we are going to talk about is the contract agreement with 120 Orange Avenue. I'm gonna ask Rob Magrino to switch places with Terry Rice. As you know, Rob has been our counsel for all of the dealings with the Orange Avenue as Terry has a conflict of interest and has stepped down from that portion of the village business.
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Yes, I sent the contract to the board. As board's aware, I believe the appraisal price was $280,000. The developers agreed to pay $292,000. He's already paid $12,000, which we have. And then at closing, the village would get the remainder of the $280,000. So the down payment is basically non-refundable. The contract is contingent on them getting site plan approval for the project that they're looking to do there. So that's a part of it, as, as are the other contracts for the properties that he's looking at there. You know, the other areas of significance are, they're taking it as-is. They know that there's an issue there with ground fields and they're gonna be taking care of that. And other than that, if the board has any questions, I just, you know, ready to answer.
Any questions from the board?
No, I think I asked Rob.
Yeah, we, you're good? Matt?
No, I mean, in, in keeping consistent with my prior voting, I'll be abstaining.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
You were shaking your pen like you were gonna say something. So I thought you wanted to say something.
A nervous habit.
I know, I'm sure you do want to say something. Anyway, yes, Matt also will not be participating in any of this project with Orange Avenue as well as a conflict of interest also applies to him. Mr. Meehan, did you have anything?
No.
Nothing, okay.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Approval of the contract.
Approval of the contract.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Meehan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
And then the only other thing we had discussed earlier was, we have discussed with the developer about coming back to the board.
Yeah, I would, I have asked the developer, since his plan has changed since he first brought it to the village, I have asked him to please bring everything back to the planning board. I think that we should have recommendation and review from the planning board due to the fact that there are changes in the project. So, I would like tonight to send this back to the planning board for its review and recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I abstain.
So moved. Right. We will also do a continuation of the public hearing. No, I'm sorry, we closed the public hearing, we have to start, we have to set a new public hearing.
Yeah, a new one.
Yeah. We'd have to set a new public hearing. I would also like to hear from the public since this project has changed and the conditions of which was originally proposed. I think it's also important to hear from our residents again. Therefore, I think that we should set another public hearing for the July 14th meeting to hear from you, the public, again.
Excuse me, but how is the planning board going to meet and make a recommendation? Also, the county planning board will have to.
Yes.
So, I don't know if the 14th is not.
We are not bound to do this. I just feel that it's appropriate, but Rob has checked into it. This does not have to go back to the planning board, it does not have to go back to the county. I just believe it's the correct thing to do. You know, it is, it is a project that has changed and the planning board has not had a chance to review it. So, therefore, that was my recommendation, is to send it back to the planning board.
Okay.
Okay. But I, it doesn't, you know, I don't think we're going to be prepared to even vote on July 14th on anything. You know, the pilots have not been approved by Town of Raanepo or by the school district yet, and I think that the board is in agreement that we are not going to vote on a zone change until we know that the pilots are all completely in place.
Okay, I agree.
Okay, so, if everyone's agreement, I think we could have the public hearing start next month on July 14th. I guess we'll do it at 7:45?
You have one at 7:40.
7:50?
7:50.
So, that it gives the public, again, a chance to speak since all of these things have changed with the project. So, I would need a motion to set the public hearing.
I'll make the motion. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay, now that we, our musical chairs portion of this meeting is now over, I'd like to talk about the Rockland County Police Act, Section 1A resolutions that this board passed in good faith. We were approached by the Village of Armont as well as the Village of Hillburn to ask to enter into contracting with us for police services. I would like you to know the fact of the matter is, is that the Village of Suffolk did not go out and solicit to different villages to provide police services. However, these two villages approached us as they felt as though they were paying too much money for their police services. The Village of Hillburn, I'm sorry, the Village of Armont presently pays $4.7 million for a police officer to police their village. They also have the benefit of using their detective bureau. I want you to know that our complete budget of 38 officers, our employees of the police department, is a little over $5 million and Armont was paying $4.7 million. So, when they came to us to ask us if there was any way that we could help them out to relieve some of the burden from their taxpayers, we looked into it and we found that we could save the Village of Armont millions of dollars in addition to, we could put several million dollars into our own police budget to offset the budget here and the burden of the police department budget to our village residents. So, what we were looking to do is to lower our residents' taxes and it would significantly. We would be able to put that money, not only put it into our police budget, but remain the same services that we have now in addition to being that Armont borders us, we would have additional protection because the crossover is so small between the two villages. So, when we did the numbers and we looked, you know, we looked at the benefits to the village, we felt they were very strong and it could really help the village out. My job is to make sure that I try to keep our taxes as low as possible and this was a great opportunity for us. After the Village of Armont came to us, the Village of Hillburn came to us and also asked, they came to my office and said, we'd like to know, is there any way that you could help us out? Again, we did the numbers, although their budget is not as large as the Village of Armont, they were still paying a significant amount of money for a police officer and we felt, again, the numbers weren't as big, but yes, we could indeed defray the burden of, from our taxpayers and also help out the Village of Hillburn. Governor Cuomo right now is very big on shared services, he's very big on combined services and to be honest with you, having this opportunity to look into shared services really has told the tale. It definitely works. It can save our village a significant amount of money and we can all, you know, have a little tax break and I'm sure everyone would welcome that. It's very hard these days to meet our taxes, they keep going up and wouldn't it be nice to see them come down a little bit? Since that time, I have had, reached out to the Village of Armont and to the Village of Hillburn on several occasions and I have not gotten back any more interest in contracting with us. Therefore, tonight I would like to ask the board to rescind the resolutions as there does not seem to be interest and there's no reason for the Village of Suffolk to have resolutions out there of uninterested parties. So, the Village of Armont seems to no longer be interested in contracting services with us as well as the Village of Hillburn, which is very disheartening and discouraging to me because as the mayor of this village, I look for every opportunity to save my taxpayers' money. Yeah, so I'm going to let Terry talk to you about the resolutions.
Yeah, basically, the resolutions that the village board had adopted on two prior occasions, first with respect to Armont and then second with respect to Hillburn, was the first step in the process to amend a state statute known as the Rockland County Police Act because that statute effectively prohibited us from entering into the contract. We could enter into the contract, in fact, but there would be no cost savings because the town would not have to reduce the taxes that were paid by these other municipalities. So, we passed the resolutions on two occasions. We did not send them into the state senate or the assembly awaiting action by the other municipalities and since they haven't acted, the resolution here would be to rescind those. Without those resolutions, the process to amend the state statute couldn't start and so that's what the resolution would accomplish.
We need a motion. Okay, we need a motion.
On the question, I, this is, I saw this for the first time tonight and it's very disappointing because I had talked with you and I know you've worked hard on it, Mayor, and I know, I've had a great conversation with Chief Osborne and he thinks it's a great idea. And I really'd like to, like, give these villages, like, one more opportunity. I'd like to have you send them a letter, you know, and actually tell them, you know, that we're going to rescind and give them a last chance. I mean, I don't know if you've been in direct contact with these people or what the story is, but.
Yeah, the unfortunate part of it, Jack, is we explained to them that we would have needed those resolutions sooner rather than later because, you know, the legislature will be going into recess for the summer.
Yes, of course.
So, no action will be able to be taken and they were quite aware that in order for us to accomplish this, that these resolutions had to be taken care of. I myself have made several phone calls to both Hillburn and Armont and left several messages that have all gone unanswered.
Okay.
So, that is the only reason that I brought it to this tonight.
That's fair enough, Mayor.
And it can be done again if they want.
And if the interest comes back, Jack, we can always do it again.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we have everything in writing.
Correct. Right.
Okay.
We have all the work done.
We have all the work done, right. So, if somebody would like to make a motion?
Motion to rescind both prior resolutions.
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Okay, the next item on our list is the resolution for gun control. Terry?
Yep. As you recall, at prior meetings, a number of people had come to the board requesting that they, that the board pass a resolution which basically would entail studying which gun manufacturers take protective measures and which don't and to try and integrate that into our purchasing policy. The resolution that they provided as a draft was a little too strong, so we've modified that basically so that we can cooperate to the extent that we deem it appropriate and consider the findings of that study in the purchase of firearms in the future to the extent that we deem it advisable and to the extent that it's permitted by the New York State bidding laws.
Mayor?
Yes.
I saw this on the revised agenda put out today and saw the resolution as I came here tonight. I just think it might be, and I spoke to the chief briefly today about some concerns that I might have and I think we share some concerns. I just think it might be not a bad idea to put this onto the next workshop agenda so we can all discuss it among ourselves and get some input in the setting of a workshop with the chief present and perhaps get some more information on it and some more questions answered about it. So, I just think it's appropriate that it be put on to a workshop agenda.
Okay, Matt, I just wanted to apologize. You know, Terry and I have, and the chief and Joe have kind of been going back and forth on the verbiage on this to get it to a place where we thought it was at least a good starting place. So, if the board is not comfortable voting on this tonight and needs to have more discussion at a workshop so we could work out the details, whatever your pleasure is, I have no problem with that.
I mean, clearly the resolution that Terry prepared is much narrower than the other one was.
Yes.
I remember looking at the original paperwork that was supplied to us many months ago. I just, I just think that, like other things that we, you know, approach at a board meeting usually comes to workshop first and I just think it might not be a bad idea to discuss it there first. So, I don't know if that needs a formal motion to table. I would do that if that's the case.
Sure.
Or if we just want to informally.
Yeah, we wanted to do that so that we keep it on the agenda.
I would move the table.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, the next item I have is to set a public hearing for 20-minute parking on East Maple Avenue. This has been an ongoing battle with the residents and the business owner, Bagel Train on the corner of East Maple. Problem being that we all love Bagel Train bagels and there's a mad rush there in the morning to get your coffee and bagel on the way to work. The battle has been on the one side and I, and I feel for the residents, they live there, they're trying to get in and out of their driveway, it becomes a little tough if all these cars are parked there for long periods of time. On the other hand, you know, I've had several people come into my office, leave me voicemails, very angry people, that they've gotten tickets when going to the Bagel Train to get their bagels in the morning because there's not enough parking, people are parking there too long, people can't park there. It's just been an ongoing battle. So, being fair to the business owner, we, you know, we don't want to make the habit of having people think that Suffolk doesn't have enough parking for our businesses and going to elsewhere. I tried to come up with something that I thought may be a happy medium. I spoke to the chief, we went out there, we both looked at the area. We thought maybe a middle of the road could be 20-minute parking on East Maple Avenue as opposed to no parking from 7 to 9 on East Maple Avenue. You know, we know that the residents use those spots on the street as well, so this would preclude those people parking their cars there between 7 and 9 for, you know, the day, for the train, just, you know, leaving their car there for work reasons. So, the residents would still have the opportunity to use those spots for the rest of the day in the evening, but in the morning hours, to be fair to the residents and to the business owners, 20-minute parking seems to be a good middle of the road. So, I'd like to have a motion to set a public hearing for the 20-minute parking on East Maple Avenue.
And are you saying that 20 minutes is from 7 to 9?
Correct, only.
And who's going to be monitoring that?
The police department will be enforcing it. Just for two hours, yes.
For the July 14th meeting?
Yes.
Motion to set the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved to, that'll be 8 o'clock, Jim?
Yeah, you have one at 7:50 for the.
We might take it for any.
We'll put it at 8 o'clock and then we could.
Clark, can you give me a description on those two?
Just for the whole street, man?
Okay.
No, just for the portion that's from 7 to 9, the parking.
Okay. But Terry, Terry?
Terry, I'll change the premise, but I will get your description, that's all.
Right, okay, great.
Can the whole board get that?
Yes. We're, once he gets it all, well, once he's going to put it all together. Perfect.
Right.
Perfect.
Yeah, because it'll have to go to local law.
Okay, does anyone have anything else?
Yes, Mayor, just, I had asked earlier if I could be recognized just prior to a Suffolk has a lot of wonderful people in it, obviously, that live here and two, we lost two people within the last two years that I just would like to speak very briefly about. Many people here may know Jim and Betty or Elizabeth Sinclair.
Oh, yeah.
The Sinclairs were lifelong residents of the village. Mr. Sinclair passed away in 2012 at the age of 90. Mrs. Sinclair passed away just last week at the age of 92. They were both born and raised in Suffolk, very active in Sacred Heart Parish, involved in the Knights of Columbus, involved in VFW and they were both veterans. Mrs. Sinclair was a nurse, an Army nurse in World War II. Mr. Sinclair was a co-pilot of a B-17 in the US Army Air Force during World War II, completing 30 missions over France and earned the Distinguished Flying Cross. They raised five children on Maplewood Boulevard and there are no more Sinclairs in Suffolk anymore. Mrs. Sinclair passed away last week, her children have all moved somewhere else, but I think they were really two remarkable people and those who have met him or met them or knew them, you just, you just knew that the moment you spoke to them. So, I would just ask perhaps tonight that we can adjourn our meeting in memory of the Sinclairs and perhaps a copy of the minutes can be forwarded to a family member so that they can see that the Village of Suffolk acknowledges their long contributions to our village and will miss them, will miss them greatly. So, my motion to adjourn would be in their honor.
I'll second that. I had the, I've known that, I was privileged to know the Sinclairs as well.
Yeah, I as well. Wonderful family. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, motion to adjourn.